Good evening, everyone. Let me welcome you to our Burke County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for Tuesday, December the fifteenth, 2015. Before we begin, ladies and gentlemen, I want to take just a moment to recognize Madam Clerk, who has spent her time, as well as her getting people to donate their time. I'm sure she got them to donate their time to make our boardroom look so festive. And on behalf of the commissioners and others, Kay, we do appreciate what you've done for us here. Thank you very, very much. Madam Clerk, all the commissioners are here, along with the county manager, the county attorney. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would, check your mobile devices and please silence those for me at this time if they happen to be on, put them on vibrate. And if you are a presenter tonight, we ask that you come to the microphone and speak as closely to that microphone as you can. Again, I want to thank you for being here during this time of year. We're close to the Christmas holidays, and from the Board of Commissioners, we'd like to wish you and your families a very Merry Christmas and a happy holiday season. Our invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Amy Fries from Christ UMC. And after Amy gives the invocation, our children from George Hildebrandt Elementary School will come up and do the pledge of allegiance, and then they have a special pledge right after this pledge of allegiance. So if you'll stand with me as Pastor Fries comes.
Gracious and loving God, we come to you this evening in a spirit of humility and of thanksgiving. We thank you, oh God, for your servants among us. We thank you for their willingness to serve. We thank you, God, for their time, for their dedication, their hard work, and their talent. We thank you, oh God, that you have raised up leaders in our midst and that they have heard and heeded your call. This evening, we thank you for the support of their families, their friends, and their constituents. In this job that is difficult and often thankless, we thank you, oh God, for those who stand beside them, to encourage them, and to remind them that the work that they are doing is work worth doing. Lord, we pray for your strength and courage to fall over them as these commissioners seek to make the best possible decisions for the good of this community, as they seek to bring new jobs to our area, as they seek to be good stewards of this beautiful land and the resources you've provided, and as they seek to serve the very diverse populations represented in our community. Oh God, give to these commissioners your wisdom and discernment as they help to lead this city, so then in all things, this work will be pleasing to you. In the name of your Son, Jesus Christ, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God now and forever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Amy.
(Inaudible)
It is my responsibility to make it a great day. I will reach my goals, respect others, do what I ask, and listen to my teachers. I will be honest and considerate of others. I am proud to be a George Hildebrandt Eagle.
Great. All right. If you'll stay right there, we're going to come down and take a picture with you, and it will hang over on our wall, so we'll be right down with you. Harriet, come on up. Parents.
She all this step forward, so we'll get behind her. There we go. There we go.
Gentlemen, in front of you have the September fifteenth, 2015 Board of Commissioners' regular meeting, and the September eighteenth, 2015 Board of Commissioners' special meeting minutes. I think you've all had an opportunity to take a look at those. We'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no deletions or additions, I'll be happy to make a motion to approve both sets of minutes as printed.
All right, gentlemen, you've heard Wayne's motion. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Be five to nothing, Madam Clerk. At this time, we'll move into item number five, which is organization of the board. At this time, I will recognize County Manager Bryanstein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, we come to that point in the year where we go through our organizational meeting, and at this point in time, I will open the floor to nominations for chairman of the Burke County Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Manager.
Manager and fellow commissioners, I'd like to nominate Jeff Britton.
Mr. Manager, I'd like to nominate Wayne Abley as vice chair to lead this board for coming year.
Okay, this is for the chairman at this point.
It's for chairman.
Are there any other nominations besides Jeff Britton for chairman?
And myself, right?
I think they do the vice chair afterwards.
I think he corrected that and said chairman.
Yeah, chairman.
So, all right, so you're nominating Wayne is chairman?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Are there any other nominations? Having none, then let's move to the first nomination of Commissioner Taylor, nominating Jeff Britton as chairman. All those in favor of Jeff as chairman, raise your right hand, please. I count Jeff Britton and Maynard Taylor in the affirmative. All those in the negative, please raise your right hand. Three in the negative. Next, we have Commissioner Jack Carroll has nominated Commissioner Wayne Abley as the chairman. All those in favor of Wayne Abley as the chairman, raise your right hand.
On the fourth, I believe the new chairman is supposed to do the offering for the vice chair. New chairman, we'll open the floor for nominations.
We're still on the chairman. We had two names nominated as chairman. One was your nomination for Jeff Britton. There was only two in the affirmative and three in the negative. And then we had the nomination by Commissioner Carroll of Wayne Abley for chairman.
Okay, all right.
And...
But draw the question.
All those in favor of Wayne Abley as the chairman, did you get the count? All those in favor of Wayne as the chairman, please raise your right hand. I see three in the affirmative. All those in the negative, please raise your right hand. All right, it's three to two, with Commissioner, Mr. Abley is now the chairman.
Good, I thank you all, and I just want to say, Johnny, I thank you for your two years. You've done a great job, and we really thank you for, you've been out in front of the community, and I know you're leading the way on this bond issue with many groups, and we just thank you for the work you're doing, and thank you for the work you've done.
I think a round of applause is in order.
And with that, we'll go to election of the vice chairman for our 216 year, and again, I'll be glad to open the floor for nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Jeff Britton.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Maynard Taylor to be the vice chair for coming year.
Any other nominations? All right, we'll go ahead and close the nominations, and we'll go ahead and put Jeff up first. All those in favor of Jeff Britton for being the vice chairman, please raise your right hand. All right, that's three, four, and I guess two against. All right, so again, really Jeff has it there with the three votes. I would think that would end that process right there. I think we have to... So again, Jeff will be the vice chairman, and then we'll go on to, the first thing is the appointment of the county attorney. And again, I'll be happy to open the floor for nominations for the county attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate James Reed Simpson.
All right, any other nominations? All right, I'll move that nominations are closed, and all those in favor of James Reed Simpson being our county attorney, please raise your right hand. That's unanimous. The next thing is our appointment of the tax attorney, and again, I'll be glad to open the floor for nominations for our county tax attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I'd nominate JR Simpson.
All right. And if I may, I'd like to nominate Redmond Deal for our tax attorney. Any other nominations? If not, we'll go ahead and close the four for nominations. All those in favor of JR Simpson to be our tax attorney, please raise your right hand. All right, and the negative, please, two against, three, so it puts JR as our tax attorney for 2016. With that, that ends the nominations, and I think, if you don't mind, Johnny would like this chair, and I sort of, if you all don't mind, I'd like to have Brian in this chair and Maynard on the other side, just to keep me on the schedule, if you don't mind.
Why Maynard on the side?
Because I need you, your expertise on the other side of me.
Jeff.
Jeff's vice.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff's, I'm sorry. Jeff will be, that'll be fine, I'm sorry. So if nobody minds to make those changes, maybe once in a while I might fall asleep and I need Brian to poke me in the ribs or something, so...
Johnny, you wanted that chair.
No, this is fine. JR does not buy it, I don't think.
Sorry, Jeff. All right, Johnny, do you have any comments to make? Give you a chance to...
I thank you for the kind words that you said, and the last two years of my life have been tremendous. This board has moved this county forward like no other board has, in my personal opinion. We've accomplished some things. We've not accomplished everything that we wanted to, but again, it's been a pleasure to serve as your chairman for the past 24 months.
Good, thank you, Johnny. All right. Item six is the approval of the agenda is approved, and I'll be happy to accept a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask that we take that agenda, item number two, off the agenda, and move it to next month's regular meeting.
Item number two, the Burke County Adoption of Rules and Procedures for 216?
Yes, sir.
All right. Anybody have a problem with that?
Repeat that, if you will, please.
Item two under consent agenda, adoption of rules and procedures for 216. And Brian, you have something to add to?
No, 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 there was just, there was a thing about zoning consistency statement, that's all.
We have some conflict statement in that, and it does need to be fixed.
Do we need a motion on that, or just consensus would be fine?
No, you need a motion.
All right. A motion to take off item two under the consent agenda, and that's the adoption of rules and procedures, and apparently there's some problems with that, so I might take some study.
Jeff made that motion.
Yeah, all right. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Pose like sign, that passes five to zero.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request that we table item number three on items for decision, because I think we need to look at that a little closer and give some time to do more investigations, what's taking place with that. So I don't know if table it until when. I think probably February would be the best month, or I'd be open to January or February. I think that would give us enough time to make decisions on.
And that's really, goes from fiscal year, so it really doesn't have to be acted on today, I don't think.
You might want to ask Rhonda about the timing of that, how that would impact.
Well, I know it doesn't impact the fiscal year, because it goes from fiscal year to fiscal year, so, but Rhonda can...
That's item three under decisions, correct?
Right.
Yes, if we table this right now, then, when are you looking at bringing this back on? February, or did you have decided when you would want to bring it back on?
You know what I'd like to see, Rhonda? Years ago, we had a insurance committee on the Board of Commissioners to review some of these things. I personally like to see us maybe have two commissioners and review that with you all and bring back a recommendation.
Okay, would you like for us to send out another RFP, or what would we?
I don't think, it's up to the commissioners, but I personally don't think you need to, but I think we need to, there's some things that, I think there's a lot more questions out there and whatever, and...
Okay. If we have a new broker, though, we would need to have that in place at the first of the year, to have everything ready to go for open enrollment in May, so we are on a short timeframe here, if we're going to make any changes at all.
But it still goes from fiscal year to fiscal year, right, the contracts?
Yes, but the prep before it has to be, like, in February. We're working through that in February and March, to get ready for the April-May time period.
So if we appoint or get two commissioners to serve on a committee with you all, if they bring back a recommendation in February, that would be all right?
If we could have that in place by February.
That should give you enough time. You had the whole month of January, and...
Yes.
But you know, we did have an insurance committee for years, years and years back, back when, and...
And that was for voluntary products, not for the group medical or group health.
Any other feeling on this issue?
Wayne, I'll just add that there's, you know, I had a long session with Rhonda and got the questions then I had answered, and I have received several other questions, and part of them do question the insurance committee and why they weren't involved in that. And the other question is, what do we lose if we change? Nobody's talked about, we know what we get if we hire, but we don't know what we lose. Like, if I've had an insurance from some other company, and I've had it for 15 years, my rate certainly is going to be lower, I think, than turn it over to a brand-new insurance agency or broker. So I think there's several questions that I'd like to get answered.
And I think, you know, we could talk about this all night, but I think the best thing is two people sit down, two board members sit down with the staff and then make a recommendation. And Jeff, would you, could you do that with maybe Maynard, or...
Yeah.
Maynard, could you do that?
Well, you're dealing with a motion and changing the motion, so Jack is going to have to agree to fix his motion to include what you just said.
We can include that in the motion. I mean, you get along with it.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Pose like sign. Right, that passes, so...
That was February.
But we'll bring it back in February. All right, so then we have two things that we're going to take off the agenda. We're going to have to take item two, adoption of the rules and procedures, there's some problems there, and then under items for decision, item three. So I'll be happy to accept a motion to approve the agenda with those changes.
So moved.
All right, you've heard the motion by Jack. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Pose like sign, that passes five to zero. All right, the next item of business is informal public comments, and do we have anybody signed up tonight to speak?
We do, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pat Messick.
But we do have scheduled public hearings.
Right.
First, or...
Oh, I'm sorry, all right. Pat, can you sit down a minute?
Sure.
We got three public hearings, and the first one is BDI Economic Development Grant, Project Gray, in a public hearing presented by Allen Wood.
Thank you, Chairman Abley, commissioners, Madam Clerk, and our county attorney. Project Gray is a plant expansion in Burke County, in the town of Valdez. The company has been looking at expansion options for about the last 18 months. They've looked at moving out of town, out of state. They have settled and are working out details on expanding on-site. It would be an $8.5 million plant expansion to create 25 to 30 new jobs. They're looking at significant water increase and plan to have their decision and probably start construction in the first quarter. The town of Valdez is working on an incentive plan with them as well. And what we've asked for your consideration is to create an economic development incentive grant based on the new taxable base that is generated by the $8.5 million expansion. I would like to discuss 75 percent, returning 75 percent of the new taxable base to them for a period of five years, beginning the first tax year after the work is completed and paid to them after they have paid all taxes that are due on that property. One thing I would like to ask is, there is some work being done with the town of Valdez on their incentive, and they had not completed that as of yet, so I would like after the public hearing, if it would be your pleasure to not take action on this until January and table it until that point in time, that we've had the public hearing, and then they should, Valdez should have had time to complete their work by then and be ready to move forward with it.
Any questions before we open the public hearing for Allen? If not, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak to this item on the agenda? If not, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and again, so Allen, you want us not to take any action on this?
Just us, you would table it and give Valdez time? Give Valdez time to complete their work, and they were supposed to have it back on their agenda in January, and they would approve their incentives. I figured it made sense to have their incentives completed and have all of that completed before the county took action, since that was the main step.
Any questions for Allen before we have a motion to table this till?
When does Valdez have their monthly meetings?
I think it's the first Tuesday, well, usually it's first Monday, which, so that would be the third.
Third Tuesday.
Valdez. Valdez has, I think it's the first Monday, so I think it's, I think the third would be that date.
Then they'd have the meeting before we have our meeting in January, so that would take care of that, okay.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
But we have sufficed the public hearing portion of it, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we need a motion to table this till the appropriate time.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Jack made the motion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Pose like sign, that passes five to zero. And Allen, you're up for item two.
Item two is a new facility that is being proposed, a new company that is looking to move to Burke County. We call this Project Forest. It is a textile company that is looking to move from Mount Holly. They're moving, they have the old posted building, which is on Road His Road, under That building has been empty in excess of 10 years. We're looking at doing a building renovation grant for the company. With that renovation, the price tag on it's approximately $150,000. They would put in new doors, windows, upgrade the HVAC system, and some lighting and work to the restrooms. They're looking at eight, a minimum of eight additional new jobs. Average wage is about $13 an hour. They have a proprietary product that is going to be used, or is used primarily in the medical field, and they have been, this process, it started in an incubator, they moved to a facility in Mount Holly, and they're looking to bring it here as better access to labor, and this building better suits their needs than where they're currently located. What we're applying for would be a $40,000 building renovation grant. The county's match would be $2,000. There is a pre-app date of January 5th, which we're working to meet, and then a decision on that would be February the 18th. We would have a pre-conference meeting or a phone call with Commerce next week, and so we would, before we submit the application, we would need a resolution from the county commissioner to, or county Board of Commissioners to submit with that grant application.
Good, thank you, Allen. Is there questions before we open the public hearing for Allen on this end item? All right, if there's not, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak to this issue in the audience? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and what is the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we do approve this agreement between Burke County and Project Gray as presented and authorized by County Manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the board and subject to review and revisions by the county attorney.
This is, there's a resolution, and it's a two-part motion there.
I don't have...
Adopt a resolution number 21526, and inappropriate 2,000 general fund balance, approve a contract between Burke County and the COG for grant administration contingent upon a grant award. So it's a two-part motion. Can we just do that in one motion, or do we need two motions?
Yeah, but we need to clarify the project.
Yes.
This is Project Forest, not Project Gray.
Right.
So we had both of them in the first one?
They're two separate items, and we've had the second hearing now, and they asked us to delay taking action on the first one until Valdez could straighten out some things about the agreement, so this is a different project.
We'll change the motion, Mr. Chairman, to appropriate $2,000 of general fund from the fund balance and approve a contract between Burke County, and this is Western Piedmont Council of Government for grant administration contingent upon a grant. Council of Government for Grant Administration contingent upon a grant award.
And that also includes the resolution.
Yeah, and adopt the resolution number 2015-26.
All right. All right, any other questions on this resolution and the $2,000? If not, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Oppose like sign. That passes five to zero. Thank you. Thank you, Allen. All right, the next thing is a Community Developed Zoning Map Amendment, 2MA 21506, public hearing, again, presented by Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, early Merry Christmas to all of you. It's nice to see you this evening. Seems like I've been up here quite frequently with rezonings lately. So tonight, we have a request, and this request is from Larry Curtis. He is the applicant, and this is zoning map amendment 2015-06. And this zoning map amendment request is to rezone four parcels of land that total 2.5 acres of land off of US 70 and the Iker Township. The applicant's request that the property be rezoned from light industrial to general business. If you remember, at the last meeting, I described this and that this had been rezoned in 2010 from general business to light industrial in order to facilitate a new bakery on those parcels. But that never came to fruition, and so about a year later, my understanding is that Mr. Curtis purchased the property, and he began a boat salvage restoration business at that location. Code enforcement was made aware that there was a business there in July of 2015 of this year, and that they began an investigation into that business. Through the investigation, it was determined that no permits were obtained to establish the new business. So unfortunately, the zoning ordinance does not permit this use in the light industrial district. At first glance, you might think that it should because it is almost light industrial in nature. But the nature of the business is to obtain or purchase used non-operational boats in various conditions of disrepair, and he basically takes those and he rebuilds the motors. He restores the holes on the ones that are able to be salvaged, and that is the type of business that takes place there now. It's almost a little bit between a scrapyard and a salvage business, as well as a boat storage and maintenance facility. So there's several things going on, on the land. Mr. Curtis has requested that the four parcels be rezoned back to the general business district. If the rezoning is approved, Mr. Curtis could continue to operate a boat storage and maintenance facility. However, he could not operate the scrapyard, and he would have to get rid of whatever boats are there and material that might be classified as junk because it is not a junkyard. A junkyard would fall under an industrial type of classification. As far as the site goes and the analysis of that site, the existing land uses in the vicinity, and I believe you have a map of that, is a mix of residential homes, vacant wooded land. There's a church there, shows up as office and institutional, and various commercial uses, including a carp pond. There are no FEMA-designated flood plains on any of the parcels. The property is located within the Lake Hickory WS4 Protected Water Supply watershed. There is public water along US 70, however, there is no sewer available at this time. The topography of the four parcels is relatively flat, and there are no known water courses on the four parcels. The parcels are joined to the north by a 200-foot railroad right away. As far as conformity with the comprehensive plan, this falls under the urban corridor small area plan, and it recommends that the future land use for these particular parcels be general business, so that indeed is in keeping with the current land use plan. The proposed rezoning, I'm sorry, as far as the staff comments go, the staff does not see many issues that would create a problem with this rezoning. The parcel has existing screening, which provides a buffer between the commercial use and other non-commercial uses. You gentlemen have pictures which show different angles of the property. If the rezoning is approved, the one issue that the applicant must address is the storage of non-operational boats, and he is willing to do so. So the staff recommendation was to approve this when it went to the planning board. The planning board met in October, and they voted six to zero to approve zoning map amendment And as you're aware, this would require two motions, a motion and statement of zoning consistency and a motion to approve if you so choose to do so. And I believe the applicant is here. If you have any questions for him or me following the public hearing.
All right. Comments from the Commissioners before we go into the public hearing? Any questions for Scott? All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak to this item on our agenda? If not, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And again, as Scott says, this is a two-part motion. And what is the pleasure of the Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, one question, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Danny, excuse me, Scott, that's a mess down there. In your opinion, rezoning this, is it going to clean that up?
Well, it will because we were not aware of this before, and our code enforcement, as you're well aware, I hope you're aware, has about a 99% success rate in cleaning things up and bringing things into compliance. So the applicant has said that he is willing to work with us on that, and since we're aware of the issues, we'll be keeping up with it. Yes, sir.
He must have 40, 50 boats on there or more?
Yes, sir. Probably does.
And he will continue to repair boats there?
That's my understanding.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments or questions? All right. What is the pleasure of the Board on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to adopt the ordinance amendment, the official Burke County zoning map as it relates to the facts presented for ZMA 2015-06. Also adopt a statement describing whether its action is consistent with an adoption comprehensive plan and explain why the Board considers the action to be reasonable and in the public hearing.
Maynard, what is the motion?
Well, this describes the motion a little. This motion and statement of consistency with comprehensive planning in surrounding areas, ZMA 2015-06. Scott, is that something that you also need read in the minutes in a motion?
We'll ask Madam Clerk if she feels that it's necessary or if it can be referenced.
I can put it in there for you.
All right, so you'll put that in?
If you just refer to it.
All right, so what would you need him to refer to?
Also including the consistency statement.
That was provided to the Board.
So it's a two-part motion. Again, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Oppose like sign. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Number nine is informal public comments, and Pat, I'm sorry, but come on forward.
My name is Pat Messick. I live at 114 Parker Lane, Morganton. Good evening. As a retired law enforcement officer with 25 years of experience and training, I am in complete dismay and absolutely appalled that we do not have adequate funds for our school systems so that they are able to provide full-time officers for our schools, especially for our elementary schools. Since 1980, there have been over 300 children murdered in school-related shootings across this country. The Washington Times reports that since Sandy Hook, there have been approximately 142 shootings across this country. Burke County Sheriff's Department has nine resource officers assigned to the Burke County's public schools. There's a full-time deputy at all the high schools and middle schools. The exception is elementary. Sheriff Wiston's school resource officers do a professional job on a daily basis in protecting, monitoring, and enforcing criminal violations in the schools. However, Sheriff Wiston can only provide law enforcement to these specific schools because additional funding for salaries and benefits for new officers was not approved or provided for the sheriff's department budget in 1516. Burke County schools receive the money for law enforcement through appropriations from discount through you gentlemen. Burke County has approximately 13,000 students, which over 3,000 are elementary students in the 16 elementary schools. These elementary students are aged four to 10, and are the most offensive, and history has shown that us, that they have been targets before. The cost to provide 16 full-time law enforcement officers to all the elementary schools would be an enormous cost to this county. At a cost of approximately $40,000, which would include a basic salary and benefits for a beginning deputy, would cost at least 3/4 of a million dollars for a year. I would recommend hiring retired law enforcement officers in which approximately 50 or more live in this county. And probably of those 50, half of them are still working. They're young enough, after 30 years of service, they have part-time jobs. I know of over a dozen. Additionally, off-duty officers from the Sheriff's Department and local municipalities can be utilized. Each department allows them to work off-duty. These officers could be contract employees for the school system, receiving no benefits. There's your cost, the benefits, not the salary. They could be paid the current $20 to $25 an hour, which is what the schools pay in a private police agency. These officers, retired or trained, experienced and educated, 30 years of experience, they would offer a viable alternative to the expense of hiring full-time employees.
Mr. Chairman, I'll leave the three-minute.
Yes, could you cut your comments short?
Could I have just one more minute? This is extremely important.
All right.
Please. To fund these positions for the school, I recommend the following. Mr. Ryan says in the News-Herald, $1.4 million has come to this county in the first of the year from sales tax. There's $13 million in your fund balance. You just took $2,000 out of it. You have to keep a certain percentage, I understand. In closing, I'm not here to cry wolf or to criticize you or criticize the school for the lack of manpower or funding. Burke County has enhanced security of the buildings. The security improvements will slow down an intruder. It will not stop them, period. With all the violence, terrorist attacks in Paris, California, and senseless deaths, so many people we owe it to Burke County, citizens, parents, grandparents, and children to work, live, and be educated in the safest environment possible. No parent, relative, politician, or community should ever again have another Sandy Hook. Innocent youngs are lost today in LA. You saw the news. 3/4 of a million students did not go to school today. 900 schools closed on a terrorist threat.
All right, Pat, you got it.
Thank you. Please fund these positions, January 2016. There is no excuse. You have the money.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, anybody else? All right, that'll close the informal public comments for tonight. We'll go to the consent agenda, and again, remember that item two is off the consent agenda, and I'll turn that over to Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Board, your first item is BDI, Approval of BDI Bylaws. Number three, Clerk Resolution Establishing the BOC 2016 Meeting Schedule. Number four, BOC 2016 Commission Appointments. Item five, Clerk, Board of Health Reappointments and Removal. Item six, Clerk Region E Appointments or Reappointments. Item seven, Clerk Appointments to Board of Equalization and Review. Item number eight, County Manager, Approval of ATM Lease for Foothills Higher Ed Center. Item nine, County Manager, the Hildebrand Library Senior Center Plans. And gentlemen, I'd like to take just a minute to allow our staff to show the plans and have that recorded into our minutes of the building as we believe it would be and the plans that you've taken a look at. Quite nice, very nice. All righty, let me move on. Item 10, Health Department, Birth Control Methods Fee Changes. Item 11, Health Department Proclamation for National Radon Action Month in January. Item 12, Tax Department EMS Collections Report for October 2015. Item 13, Tax Department Tax Collection Report for November 2015. Item 14, Tax Department Release Refund Report for November 2015. Item 15, Tax Resolution Establishing Board of Equalization and Review. Item 16, Tax Department Late Application for Age Exclusion. And item 17, Western Piedmont Council of Government Administrative Agreement for Spartacraft Building Reuse Grant. That concludes your consent items.
All right, any questions for Brian? If not, a motion to approve the consent agenda is printed.
Mr. Chairman.
All right. Again, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Oppose like sign. That passes five to zero. All right, that takes us down tonight to items for decision, and the first one is Appointments to the Tourism Development Authority. And in your packet, you'll see the terms of Polly Ledbetter, Sharon Jablonsky, Barbara Hefner, Betty Fowler, and myself on the Tourism Development Board in December 31st. All desire reappointment except Mrs. Heffer, who is retiring. The term is for two years. Seats number five and seven are Betty Fowler and myself, respectively, are traveling tour room at large seats, and we had several applications that were received for these seats. Betty Fowler, myself, Kurt Teague, and Joan Maloch. There's not any budgetary effect on this, and Polly Led, Sharon Jablonsky on seat number two, that's more or less a given, as item three, those are appointments that have to be on there according to the occupancy tax. And I'll go ahead and, I guess we'll go ahead and open that up for nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Kurt Teague for seat number five.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Wayne Ablie for that seat.
That's the at-large?
Mm-hmm.
All right, any other nominations?
I'd nominate Betty Fowler, Mr. Chairman.
So this is for two seats at the large, at the large seats. And I, Brian, do we have to have a motion on Sharon and Maresa because those are governed by occupancy tax? They have to, they have to be on those seats there.
JR, just go ahead, just.
I'd recommend going ahead and approving them individually.
Individual. All right. Any other nominations? And I, let's see, I guess on Polly Ledbetter, two, to seat number one, collector of occupancy tax, I guess she needs to be, let's see, Polly needs to be reappointed, too, if, or if there's somebody else on that, on seat one. But they have to be, again, a collector of occupancy tax, which she is. So if, those are the numbers there, the people there, we'll go ahead and close the nomination. So if, those are the numbers there, the people there, we'll go ahead and close the nominations, and I guess we'll just go down the line, and Polly Ledbetter, a motion to reappoint Polly to a seat number one, and like I say, she's got, that's a seat that's got to be because of occupancy tax.
Mr. Chairman, do I understand, clerk, that there's only one person who's applied for the number-one seat, and only one for the number-two seat?
Well, again, the number-two seat, both of those, Maynard, have to be, because of the occupancy tax laws, they have to be on there. Sharon has to be on that, on that board, the same as, I guess with Polly, you could put somebody else there, but it would have to be a collector of occupancy tax.
We have no other applications on file.
So it would be in order to approve number-one, number-two, and number-three?
Right, as one?
I would make that motion.
All right, you've heard the motion by Maynard. Is there any other questions on those, those three appointments? And they're more or less a given on those three, according to the laws of the occupancy tax.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I made an error. I think Johnny had a motion on the board. Didn't you, did you not motion?
No, he, he.
There were several nominations.
He made a nomination of Kurt Teague. All right, so we'll go ahead and take those three, and again, we had the motion, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign. So now it comes down to the at-large seats, and we have Kurt Teague, myself, and Betty Fowler for two seats at large. Again, want to go ahead and vote on Kurt Teague? All those in favor of Kurt Teague, please raise your right hand. All right, that's two on that.
I believe it was three, wasn't it?
Was it three, or was it?
I saw four hands, Mr. Chairman.
Even, okay.
Was it four?
I only saw three, but I was writing.
Okay.
It was four.
We may want to do it again, but I thought I saw Jack.
Raise your hand again for Kurt Teague.
Johnny, Jeff, Jack, and Maynard, I got you.
That's four, all right. And Betty Fowler? Two, and four.
Hold on. She's, which place you putting her in, on number seven?
She's in at-large, she's an at-large member.
It could be either one, they're both on the same page.
Yeah. And then for myself? Three.
Who are voting on them? Yours?
Mine, we.
Okay.
So that was three?
You can only vote twice for those, one of those three, correct?
Yeah.
Hey, did it?
I believe it was Jack, Wayne, and Johnny was for Wayne's appointment to that second, that large seat.
I've done for one.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's four.
All right. So that'll stand, so Kurt Teague will be at the large seat, and I'll be at the large seat. All right. The next item under, items for decision is item two, county manager donation of the old county garage building. I think that's to maybe the history museum, and that's, Brian, we'll turn that over to you.
Yes, sir. We'd had interest by two parties, but I contacted the second party, and they've, they've no longer had an interest in that building from David Smith. I think I forwarded that email to, to the board members. So you only have the historic preservation judge sitting that would like to have that building donated to them, under their terms that have been established by the county attorney for the reporting and the deed.
If they fail to keep that up, it reverts back to us, right?
Is that correct, JR?
That's right.
JR, is there anything that they, that building needs, I mean, they're gonna, I guess, I haven't talked to Claude, but I guess they're gonna have to make some improvements there.
They're gonna have to take it as is.
Yeah, right.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And they're willing to do that.
They will have to if they stay inside, because it'll rain on them.
I hope they got the money to do that, because roof's gonna be, that membrane is pretty expensive.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, has there been a contract drawn up for this?
It's in your packet.
It'd be in packet. Or at least was one time.
Is there a timetable was the question I had for them to utilize it? And one other question I had on it, they can't take it and resell it, is that correct?
Right, right.
There isn't a timetable on their use of the building, but the use is limited to their tax-exempt purpose.
JR, if somebody came along after we do this and offered us a bunch of money for that property, how would, how would that work out?
It belongs to somebody else. We couldn't take advantage of it unless they violate one of the conditions that we, that we have placed on it. If they try to sell it, that they use it for purposes other than museum purposes, if they do that, then it reverts to the county.
But if we were able to talk to them, and they were agreeable to the sale, that would be an option?
Sure.
Okay, all right.
Other questions for either Brian or the county attorney on this? All right, what is the pleasure of the board on, on item number two?
Mr. Chairman, I move to donate the real property located at the corner of West Mead Street and South College Street to the History Museum of Burke County Incorporated, and to adopt resolution number 2015-25.
Good, thank you, Johnny, for that motion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign, I think that passes five to zero. Thank you. All right, number three, we're gonna put off again, and ask the committee to work with the staff, and maybe bring us back a recommendation sometime in February. That takes us down to reports and comments. Received comments from our commissioners and staff, and we'll start down with JR.
I just want to thank you all for the faith that you have in me as county attorney and as tax foreclosure attorney, and I will endeavor to live up to your high expectations.
Good, thank you, JR. Johnny?
Again, I thank you for the privilege of allowing me to be your chairman for the past two years. I'm just a great board, and again, I want to wish every family in Burke County a Merry Christmas, and I hope all the holidays are safe.
Good, thank you, Johnny. Maynard?
Well, I would echo what Johnny said about Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and Safe Christmas. And I hope it's like that great bucko and song, I hope you get everything you want for Christmas, and one thing more, so.
How about some snow?
Yeah, a little snow would be nice, wouldn't it? But I also want to say thank you for the gifts that we have exchanged here this evening, so appreciate it very much.
Right.
Same, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for the gifts and for working so hard to serve the citizens of our county. I wish each of you a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, as well as our citizens. Thank you.
And I'll echo that, too. I hope everybody has a safe and a Merry, Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year, too. We're right around the corner for that, so hope everybody, always hope that this year is better for everybody than last year, but. Jeff?
I would just echo those same Christmas wishes for everyone.
Good. Jack?
All Christmas is happy, cheerful, most of the time. But I got another comment, too. It's the new year coming up, of course, it's not here yet, but we're gonna be facing another 2016 coming up in a couple of weeks. So I would hope that commissioners would agree with me. I think we need to get off on a right foot, that being with a special or work session around early in January, somewhere around the 5th, that's when our pre-agenda is, I don't know where you want to have one then. To give all the commissioners a chance to put on paper what they would like to accomplish in the coming year, and things that we may accomplish, some things we might not be able to accomplish right away, but we put them in a plan to look forward to, especially water system in this county. It's time that we take action there and start a dialogue, and see where we need to go with that, because it's too long and too much, too many people are ending up with contaminated wells, and they can't drink their water. And I feel like neither one of us would like to wake up one morning, and our well would be dry or contaminated. So we need to start addressing these now, coming year. And I think by work session, we can come to some kind of agreement for our plan for the coming year.
I think, I think you're right, Jack. I think everybody's got some ideas on maybe what should happen this year, and maybe things that we didn't get done this year, or whatever, and maybe we could work that into pre-agenda or something earlier in the day, maybe have a couple of hours that we could spend on that, and that way, every commissioner's got a voice in, in what they think we should be doing for the coming year, or whatever.
And I'd like to congratulate the two new elected officials.
Thank you.
And we're gonna be asking you some questions, and looking for directions coming year.
Is everybody okay with setting up? I think it would be good to let everybody, you know, what, maybe what they have on their mind for this coming year, or whatever, maybe spend two, two hours or something before pre-agenda. I mean, that's just, a lot of times, we got things on our mind, and we keep it to ourselves, but this way, we'll get out, and we can sort of prioritize and whatever, and, you know, I think it would be good for our citizens if we did that, so we can arrange that if it's all right with everybody. Everybody on board with that? All right. All right, Madam Clerk, vacancy announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have the following vacancies on county boards and committees. Hickory Regional Planning Commission, Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, Council on Aging, Juvenile Crime Prevention, City of Morganton Board of Adjustment for the ETJ, City of Morganton for the Planning Board ETJ, the Voluntary Agriculture Board, the Burke County Board of Adjustment, the Burke County Board of Health, and Burke Development Incorporated, and Blue Ridge Community Action.
Good, thank you. Again, we got quite a list. We had, KU had really worked hard and got that list down, and now it's pretty big again. But again, if everybody, anybody watching TV and watching this, we sure need help on those various committees. I don't think, Brian, we need a closed session tonight.
Yes, sir.
So with that, a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, did we give Madam Clerk a chance to speak?
Oh, reports, comments.
Yeah, comment, period.
Thank you. I just wanted to congratulate the new chair and vice chair, and thank Commissioner Carswell for his service, and wish you all Merry Christmas. Thank you for the presents, and I look forward to accomplishing great things with you in 2016. Merry Christmas.
Good, thank you so much. All right, motion to adjourn.
We didn't have a cookies, no, did we?
We do.
We do?
We do. I didn't hear a motion to adjourn, but I take it.
Oh, boy.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye, and we'll.
Aye.
Again, Merry Christmas to everybody.